Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. I'd like to take a moment to please ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we turn to Mayor Pro Tem Silo Fosse.
Good evening, everyone. Can we bow our heads in a moment of silence for our brothers and sisters in Texas and Louisiana? And hopefully, with God's protection, the people in Florida will be safe as well. Just one moment, please. Thank you.
We have a number of recognitions this evening. The first is for a board member. We have many boards and commissions for the city, and we appreciate the service that our citizens provide to these boards and commissions. And we have a recognition for Vera Thompson. Vera, if you'd come forward. Vera, you've been with the Tree and Appearance Commission for three terms of three years apiece, which is nine to a year serving the city in that position. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much. We're always looking for folks to apply to our boards and commissions. Our applications are open year-round, and we make the appointments in the spring. So lots of opportunities to serve. We have a number of proclamations this evening. I'm going to call Dr. Wolf forward. Evening, Doctor Wolf. Thank you, Vera. Would you have to say a few?
Nothing, except I thank you for recognizing this and recognizing it's Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It's still a number-two cancer killer in the United States for men. Please encourage all your male friends to get screened this month. Thank you.
It's my honor, on behalf of the City Council, to present this proclamation proclaiming September 2017 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Burlington. Whereas September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, according to the American Cancer Society, prostate cancer is the third-leading cause of cancer death in American men. And whereas, in practice, for over 20 years, Dr. Michael Wolf is a leading minimally invasive prostate cancer physician in the North Carolina Triad area, an expert in reconstructive urology, female and male incontinence, BPH, and prostate cancers, Dr. Wolf has led a long career serving the citizens of Burlington. And whereas, Dr. Wolf has dedicated the past 10 years to introducing the groundbreaking medical device HIFU to patients across the room. Standing for high-intensity focus ultrasound, HIFU is a new robotics-based device using focused sound waves to deep and destroy cancerous tissues in the prostate. In development for several years, HIFU offers hope where traditional methods have left men scarred both physically and mentally. Dr. Wolf is now thought of as one of Carolina region's most experienced HIFU physicians and practitioners. And whereas, Dr. Wolf is a public figure in Burlington and regularly speaks to the media to raise awareness about prostate health while answering questions and removing fears from men about getting tested. And whereas, Dr. Wolf is not only committed to fighting prostate cancer but providing compassionate and state-of-the-art care to both men and women for a variety of urological issues. Now, therefore, I Ian Valtoudis, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Burlington, North Carolina, and call upon people in Burlington to observe the month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. Thank you, Dr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Another proclamation. Two more proclamations this evening. I'd like to call forth Chief Jay Smith and Chief Jeff Smyth.
We'll just thank you again for having the proclamation. And you know, this is one of those things that we remember each year, the recognition about that, when it's so prevalent in the news about that, about what you were doing that day. And I always remember that. Our staff remembers that, and we appreciate you doing that to recognize first responders in Burlington. Thank you.
My honor, on behalf of the City Council of Burlington, proclaim a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2017, in the City of Burlington, where its people across our great nation and the entire globe collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11, 2001, where terrorist attacks took the lives of almost 3,000 innocent people on American soil. And whereas, the events of that day instantly transformed the lives of Americans through both personal experience and an unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability. And whereas, an unprecedented historic nexus of Americans rose from the tragedy, unifying the country in an outpouring of national pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service. And whereas, many first responders and civilians tirelessly and courageously participated in dangerous rescue and recovery missions, risking and forfeiting their lives for the safety of others. And whereas, the brave men and women who serve in our nation's military were called on to leave their families and risk their lives to fight and defend America. And whereas, Monday, September 11, 2017, will be the 16th anniversary of this 9/11 tragedy. Now, therefore, I Ian Valtoudis, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2017, in the City of Burlington. Furthermore, I call upon our city's first responders, houses of worship, businesses, schools, and citizens to join our nation in sounding sirens and ringing bells for one minute at 8:46 a.m. on Monday, September 11, in honor of those who lost their lives and loved ones 16 years ago on that day. Only one. Who's going to take it? He'll take it. I'd like to call forth Jeff Parsons.
And I bring with me a member of the Tree and Appearance Commission, Julie Brown. Julie, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Jeff, thanks for being here. Would you all just say anything about Arbor Day before?
Yeah, we've got a lot of things to say about Arbor Day, and we can talk about trees, and I know you would all too. I know we're all fans of trees here in this room, especially council and those that support our deeds and efforts to keep Burlington green. We're going to proclaim, or you're going to proclaim, the 16th of September as Arbor Day. And we are going to celebrate Arbor Day at the Burlington Carousel Festival. This will be our third year of doing this, and we have a booth set up, and we'll have information about trees and tree care. And to add into everything else, we will have a tree giveaway. And every half hour, we will give away two crape merles to lucky folks who come by and win a chance. We have games of skill and games of chance. So come by and try a little tree. They grow real well. We have folks come back year after year telling us how great their tree is.
Do they bring you photos of their crape merle?
We're going to send out some information so they can do that this year.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to say that I appreciate the fact that you all help us out so much. Trees here in our town just make such a big impact. Everybody enjoys them.
We have some members of the Tree and Appearance Commission here tonight that I might recognize them.
Please do.
First of all, we have Michelle Green. She's our administrative assistant. We have Marty Mason. We have Hayden Beatty. And we just recognized Vera Thompson, who served nine years with the commission. And that says a lot about the members that will take the time to do that.
We are all tree hunters. So you see us out there, trees. We love our trees.
You're keeping a good eye on our trees.
Yes.
We appreciate your efforts, and it's my honor to proclaim Saturday, September 16, 2017, as Arbor Day in the City of Burlington. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this day, which eventually became known as Arbor Day, was initially observed in the state of Nebraska with the planting of over 1 million trees. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, the important role of trees in our environmental system must not be taken for granted. Trees can reduce topsoil erosion, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate ambient temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable source from which numerous products are derived, such as paper, materials for the construction industry, and fuel for heating. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I Ian Valtoudis, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 16, 2017, as Arbor Day in the City of Burlington. Furthermore, I urge all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and to preserve our woodlands for future generations. Thank you, board. We have a special introduction this evening. This time, I'd like to recognize Nolan Kirke.
I'm going to take this one. All right, don't mind. I'm going to ask Todd Lambert to stand. Todd, you just come forward to the podium. We're going to limit your speech to 15, 20 minutes.
Okay. I'll cut it down.
All right. So this is Todd Lambert. Today's his first day. He's our new city engineer. We are thrilled to have Todd joining our team. And I'm going to take a little about him in just a minute, but he's overlapping. Lanning Room has been serving the city for over 15 years as city engineer, so they're overlapping for the month of September, and then Lanning's retiring October 1st. I think everybody knows that, and so we're going to have a chance to do some information transfer. So Todd is here to his first day. He's a registered professional engineer, 20 years of experience in all fields of engineering, especially engineering design and management. He's a graduate of NC State. He has a bachelor's of science in civil engineering. Todd has spent a good portion of his career in the private sector, worked for Simmons Engineering here in Burlington, and has touched lots of private jobs around the city. Most recently, Todd's coming to us from the city of Greensboro, where he's worked as a chief design engineer for the city of Greensboro. He's responsible for engineering designs, roadway, utility plan review process, project management, and design work in Greensboro. Perfect experience for what we were looking for with the private sector knowledge and the municipal knowledge as well. Todd has resided here, has spent most of his life in Burlington. He's previously served the community by working as chairman of the Almanz County Planning Board. And I did that for two years and served on the board for a few other years in addition to that. Is well-known here in the community and understands the Burlington community very well. Got a solid background in development-related engineering and management, both, like I said, as I mentioned before, both from public and private viewpoints. So we're thrilled to have him here. We're glad he's here, and maybe let's give him a quick round of applause and see if he doesn't want to say we're welcome.
Well, I will say that I'm really honored to be back with the City of Burlington. I was really pleased to be able to have a chance to continue in a profession in the city I live in and be able to make a difference in the place I call home.
Thank you. This is the first of many meetings that are counting. Thank you, Todd. Next, we recognize our city clerk, Renee Ward.
Mr. Council, it's my responsibility to remind you, your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and not interfere before us. This time, I ask of any potential conflicts concerning to my such an audience.
Before council or minutes from August 15, 2017, City Council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes have been approved. There's one add-on agenda item, new business, item two, resolution, equitable community. Do I hear a motion to approve that add-on item?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the add-on item, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, add-on item has been approved. Before council is the agenda with an add-on item, do I hear a motion to approve that agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda with the add-on, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, agenda has been approved. Following our consent agenda items, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to set a date of public hearing for September 19, 2017, to receive citizen comments on the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the community development program year 2016 to 2017. Item B, to set a date of public hearing for September 19, 2017, to consider adoption of the flood insurance rake maps and the revised flood damage prevention ordinance. Item C, to reclassify the communications technology manager, level 24, position, to police technology manager, level 25, effective upon council approval. Item D, budget amendment 2018-12, economic development, donations for pre-development of Burlington Site III, details of which are spelled out in the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda has been approved. We have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing has been set to receive citizen comments regarding the brunch bill that allows Sunday alcohol sales to start at 10 a.m. This time, we recognize city attorney David Huffman.
Councilor, Mayor, the brunch bill was passed by the legislature, giving you the authority to expand the time that from noon on Sunday until 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. This did not require a public hearing, but this council saw fit to seek the public's input on this, so that's what you've set up for this evening. And at any one time after this year, you can vote on the motion.
All right. Any questions or comments from council before we begin the public hearing? This is a public hearing, so if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing has been closed. Do I hear any council discussion or motion on this matter?
I think this is one of these issues where I feel like the public had a right to come in and speak if they felt like it. Nobody's here, and that's what we get, when nobody shows up. Nobody has any comments about any issues that we have. So it's important to show up and then listen and see what your council does and what the citizens would like to have in our city. So those are my comments on that.
Any other council comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved that we adopt the proposed amendment to the city code of ordinances, Chapter 15.
We close that already? Yeah.
I would second that.
That date?
A date?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd like to immediately.
As of today? Tomorrow?
Midnight tonight.
Midnight tonight, okay.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion that's been proposed and seconded? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Item two, new business, City Council will consider adopting a resolution reaffirming the City of Burlington's commitment to promoting a just and equitable community for all citizens. This time, council recognizes city manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have a copy of the resolution at your seats. This resolution was recently suggested for consideration. It's been prepared and placed on tonight's agenda for council discussion. And at this point, just if anybody has any comments or questions, be happy to take this.
Questions from council regarding the proposal? Do we have extra copies if anyone in the audience would like to receive this?
We can make some.
We can make copies if anyone would like.
Couple of hands?
Two copies, three copies. Make a couple extra.
Would it be wrong to read it?
Sure. Be glad to read it. So the resolution before council related item two says, "Resolution reaffirming the City of Burlington's commitment to promoting a just and equitable community for all citizens. Whereas certain areas of the community have recently experienced acts of hatred, bigotry, and racism resulting in violence that has caused the loss of life and disrespect for the rule of law and the equity of all people, equality of all people, and has further posed a threat to the democratic order of our cities, states, and the country. And whereas, the City of Burlington offers our deepest sympathy and compassion for the victims of needless violence and injustice. And whereas, by acts of hatred, bigotry, and racism, the very foundations of our democracy and the constitutional order of our nation are threatened. And whereas, the City of Burlington cherishes these among many words of the honorable Nelson Mandela, 'No one is born hating another person because of the color of his skin, or his background, or his religion. People must learn to hate, and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love. For love comes more naturally to the human heart than its opposite.' Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Burlington reaffirm our commitment to a just and equitable community free of racism, hatred, and bigotry. And in doing so, we hereby, item one, encourage all residents of the City of Burlington to work together to uphold the high ideals of our democracy by fighting racism, hatred, and bigotry in our city. And item two, ask our citizens to seek ways to work together to uphold the rule of law and promote equality and defend the rights of all people in accordance with the time-honored tenets embodied in our Constitution. Propose this the fifth day of September 2017.' Any questions regarding the resolution as read out?
I'd like to say thank you to council person, Hyde, and councilman Ward, putting this together, and you guys did a good job on it from what was out there before, so thank you guys for taking care of that.
That's the mayor's suggestion as well. Thank you, everybody, for working on it.
Thank you. Any further comments, or do I hear a motion?
I'm moved we adopt the resolution.
All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion and resolution have been adopted. We have no one signed up for our public comment period? Do we have any council comments?
Yes. I have a couple of things. Number one, in honor of the Carousel Festival coming up, Diane Bott delivered these notebooks that she had put together for the council about the history of the Denzel Carousel, as well as a lot of the formulas for the restoration and the painting, and just everything that she and her committee and volunteers in our city did. Put the carousel back together again 20 years ago, I believe it is.
Thirty?
Thirty years.
Thirty years ago. Wow. That ages me. Anyway, I have, this is a lot, but I thought that it would be appropriate for you to have it before the Carousel Festival, so when you're looking at the carousel, you notice some of the things that we need to work on because that's coming up. And also realize what went into putting it together so that it's in relatively good shape today. So here's your notebook. Tony, yours is coming.
I bet we'll die in the day, Ms. Hyde, so well on the way.
And the second thing, some of you may have noticed this, but I thought it was worth putting out there for our audience here and those at home, as they say on television, that our employment is up 1.8% over the last four quarters, which I think is something to celebrate. And there was a nice article in the Piedmont Triad magazine about it. Compared to Greensboro, which is 1.1, and Chapel Hill Durham, which is 2.7. So I think we're holding our own pretty well.
Excellent. Thank you. I had a couple announcements for upcoming events. Did you want? We've got Mountain to Sea Trail Day on September 9. We've got some events planned along the Mountain to Sea Trail. I think Almanz County has the most miles of Mountain to Sea Trail constructed so far, which is amazing, and we'd like to continue to celebrate that, so I encourage folks to come out to Stony Creek Marina at 9 a.m. on September 9 and hike the trail with us. As Kathy mentioned, our 30th anniversary Carousel Festival is coming up, September 16 and 17. There'll be a chance to win a crape myrtle from the Arbor Day folks, and we'll have some great music, food, and events there. High Valley is our headlining band for that. We're excited to have them at the Carousel Festival. Folks are always impressed with our music that we have out there. Be a good lineup this year as well. Path and Trail Improvements, the council approved on September 15. They're already well underway out at our parks. Had the opportunity to check those out last week. I encourage folks to stop by Fairchild Park and see those improvements. The staff has been very busy already, putting our dollars to work and improving our parks. And you can tag your walk with #betownwalks, which is the hashtag that the city's been using. There's a lot of folks posting on that, which is exciting. And then our final Fourth Friday will be September 22. That'll be the wrap-up of the Fourth Friday season, and we've got a good lineup for that, as well as the fabulous Lumpsters will be playing in downtown. If you haven't seen them before, I encourage you to check them out. They're a lot of fun. Any other comments from council? All right. Do I hear anything else before we adjourn?
I need to make a motion, Mayor, to go into closed session for a first-line matter, pursuant to 143, 318, 11A6.
I second that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Council will enter closed session and will return when complete. Thank you for coming this evening.
Do I hear a motion to resume?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, session is resumed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, session is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.